You can see on this map, the yellow is the outline of the zone and the red shows that 150-foot buffer. So, they'd have to be set back behind that red line. So, they'd have to be behind that red line and they'd have to be basically out of the blue. And so, you can really start to see how small of an area we're talking about as to where any kind of future development of these accessories could be. And this is just a detailed area so that those of you who might live nearby can kind of see if you're familiar with where your street is. You can kind of see where...
I can't see it. Can't see any of this.
It's hard to read. Okay. Well, you can see in the little inset on the bottom that you're talking about sort of the northwestern portion of this area. Um, I can't read myself. Let me grab a hard copy.
If it helps the public, they can obviously move closer to the screen.
If you could just point out where Troy Road is and where South Beverick Road is, that would help everybody orient.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep. So...
Troy Meadow. Thank you.
I'm going to go back to the larger map so we can orient ourselves because you can definitely see those two roadways on that map.
Hey, Ed, did you bring your little laser map so she can point with that?
Sorry, I have a roving mic. So, you could see the street name that you can't read the street, but you can maybe see that there's letters there crossing sort of the, along the middle of that map. That's Troy Meadow Road. So, that's sort of bisecting this area. And then Beverick is sort of parallel to a lot of that yellow line on the left. If I could get behind the pews here, I'll get closer. Here's Beverick. South Beverick. And there's Troy Meadow. So, those are the two roads that would have to require any access. So, you can see that there's a little bit of a hole in that blue. That's an area where there could potentially be an accessory structure based on the access requirements, based on the fact that it's not wetland. So, that, you know, that's a potential area. Perhaps up there at the top corner, you can see an area that's not in blue. However, it doesn't have access to Troy Meadow Road. So, I'm not really sure how that would happen. So, you start to really, when you nail down and drill down into this, you start to really see that areas not that big that you're talking about dealing with. And so, if you keep this in your memory, this is the big map, and we're going to zoom in to the top-left corner a little bit just to see the detail. So, you can see, so South Beverick is a little bit on the left-hand side, on the bottom-left for orientation, and then Troy Meadow Road, you can see a little bit at the bottom. This is just showing you just how much of this area is basically in wetland and the setback that would have to be required from that residential zone. And then, this is sort of moving south, showing you the same thing, really how wet this area is and the distance requirement from any residential areas. So, I think with that, I'll entertain any questions from the council, and I think that there might be some folks from the public who want to make some comments.
So, just to repeat, the change that's being made only applies to this parcel, the RCW change, even though there are other RCW sites in town. It only applies to this because this exceeds the 200-acre minimum.
And is owned by one entity.
And is owned by one entity. So, there is no other area in town that meets those criteria that this would apply to.
Yes. And you know what I think would be helpful? I have a map that I believe shows all the RCW zones, and I think might be helpful to folks. So, I know this is not 100% readable either, but I think those of you who know the township, hopefully you can orient yourselves. That big blank area sort of in the top, that's the reservoir. That might help. But the area that we're really talking about is on that right-hand side, the lower right-hand corner. That's all of Troy Meadow's area. So, as you can see, there are other areas that are green. Those are RCW zones that, some of them, for instance, the Mount Tabor Homeowners Association property up there on the top-left-hand corner. There's township-owned property along Mountain Way. It doesn't total 200 acres in one contiguous area. And then, there's just a couple of other parcels. So, you can see that it does exist elsewhere in the township. It's just that it doesn't meet that criteria, so it's not going to be affected by this zoning change.
Wait, wait, hold on. We're going to go in order, sir. You'll be able to come up to the mic and ask her all your questions.
Okay.
Lights? Lights? No, they don't work anymore. I didn't tell you that? No. Any meeting past two hours, the lights stop working.
First off, does the council have any other questions?
No, I think so.
Do you want to read the public hearing part?
Well, let's see if the residents want to.
Right, that's what we're going to do. Public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2018, call in 12.
Second.
I'm sorry, we've already, we already had a motion for the public hearing. We had the presentation.
So, we should invite members of the public at this time to come forward and express their comments or opinions.
Please state your name and address and sign in. You'll be given five minutes.
John Quinn, 20 Mohawk Avenue, Lake Hiawatha. I only have one question on the previous map. When you're talking about a possible structure and what is and is not wetlands, so if I'm correct, looking at the last map of Troy Meadow Road, what you're saying is the only spot that might be potentially impacted to build on anything at all would be the old Troy Meadow Track Club site, which is at the end of that road because everything else you're saying is deemed as wetlands. So, there is very low impact there is what you're saying.
Could you just, is that your only question, sir?
Yes, my only question.
Because we're going to answer all the, after they ask all their questions, then you go ahead and answer. No, go ahead. You can answer his question.
The short answer is I don't know if that's the track club site because I don't know that site in particular. But what you can see in this map here is, again, there's sort of a doughnut hole kind of in the middle of this property, and there's a little bit of peace right at the end of Troy Meadow Road and a couple of other isolated parcels that you can visualize on the map that could potentially accommodate one of these types of uses. I mean, I think it would require some intelligent planning on the part of the property owner in terms of where your environmental center could go, given that that's sort of your largest potential use. The coverage is about 4,000 square feet. Where a ranger relief station would make sense and where you could put it. There's a lot of planning that would have to happen, and they will clearly have to, when they make an application, they'll have to come to the planning board. That will be a whole process, a public process, that they'll go through, and the planning board would be looking at these issues. And as well, they may require DEP approval for whatever they do. So, there is another step to, whenever they get to the point where they have an actual application or an actual development proposal, they'll have to come back to the township planning board for the particulars on that.
Anybody here remember, was that where the trap shoot was years ago?
That's nowhere, it's going down there. I mean, that swamp.
The trap shoot is further back into the swamp.
Bob Algeri, I live on 39 Parkside. I'm on the corner of Troy Meadow Road and Parkside Drive. Now, I thought we were going to have a map showing the proposed zone change areas with the zones marked on it. I thought that's what we agreed on last time. But I think what we're all talking about, everybody seems to be beating around the bush with where this location is going to be or is going to be proposed. I'm sure they know what they're going to do. I don't think anybody could just be this vague about their future plans. I'm sure they know a spot, and if the spot is where we all think it is, between Troy Meadow Road and...
What, 3rd Street?
And Brookside, it's going to be disastrous for the people in the area. The storm drains. I have to tell you, I had the worst experience of my life this last rainstorm. Normally, the water just shoots up out of the sewers at the bottom of Troy Meadow. This time, it came up above my driveway apron. The water was so high, the sump pump couldn't pump out against the water pressure that was out on the curb. If anybody builds anything there in that strip above to the side of Troy Meadow Road where there are no houses, and we all know where we're talking about, we're talking about the strip on Troy Meadow Road near Parkside Drive. If I'm flooded due to any more construction, they built all those houses up on Troy Road, I saw a huge difference in the water pattern. Any other construction, I think we're going to have major problems. I think we're going to get flooded. And I have to tell you, if you approve this, I'm going to hold you guys responsible, really. This is a major, this needs major research before this could be built. Major research before any houses should be put there.
There's no houses.
There's no houses.
There's no houses.
Parking lot and structures. And who's going to police the parking lot? We have drug addicts down there now shooting up behind my house, drinking, parties. No one polices that area. And I'm going to tell you, if you do this, you're doing the wrong thing if you approve this. That's all I have to say.
We're hurting everyone in that area.
Look at how this is Troy Meadow. That's the only part. You know what we're talking about.
I took some of you guys' videos of what happens there when it rains.
Sure. If you can get him to our clerk, and he'll get him to us.
Yeah, Vincent Perewick, for Brookside Court, possibly. Is this a foregone conclusion? That's my first question. Or does anything we say matter? And can it change the arrangement that's being made as a settlement? These three accessories, I still don't know where they're located, as Bob indicated. I live on Brookside Court, and it's adjacent to Troy Meadow Road. You make reference to an entrance to this location now being either Troy Meadow Road or Beverick Road, and I can't see on this map where either one of them would enter this area that we're talking about. I know that Beverick Road, you make a left before you get to Reynolds', and I could see Beverick Road having an entrance somewhere at the location that's being proposed. But I don't know how far away that is from the location that I'm at, Brookside Court. So, I'd like that. And also, the 200 acres that we're making reference to, that's a large area. I don't know where that is on the map that's been shown here.
That's that whole area.
Say it again?
That's the whole area. That's the whole area. That's the whole area.
And so, we don't know where in that area where the four structures might be built?
Susan, can you advance to the next slide, please?
Yeah. Everything you see in blue, you cannot build on. It's the little black patches that they could possibly put, a ranger station or their maintenance.
Right, and this is 4,000 square feet as well, so it has to be able to accommodate it as well.
Correct. Okay. Well, now, would someone point out to me where Troy Meadow Road is and where Brookside Court is?
Right across the biggest black piece, right? It goes right through that. See the middle? It's right there. I'm going to, yeah, right there. It goes right straight across.
Right?
Yeah.
All right. And Brookside Court?
I think at the end of Troy Meadow Road.
It's, you follow Troy Meadow all the way out, up there.
Okay. So, do you have an estimation as to how far that black area is from Troy Meadow and Brookside?
Well, isn't the yellow and the green, isn't that the 150?
That's 150.
No, he's talking about the black area in the swamp.
No, no, but she's saying if you can measure 150, it's like 400, 500.
Looks more than that.
I think it's probably more than that. The red line represents 150 feet from the closest residential property on.
So, look at it, it's hundreds. Hundreds.
Okay. And so, okay, one more question. What about the old trap shoot? How far down is that from the, or is that in the black area?
I think that's at the very end, right?
You say at the end of the road.
Troy Meadow Road is here.
The end, in which direction? Which way?
The trap shoot at the end of Troy Meadow Road down in here someplace.
That's what I'm asking.
So, it's in the blue?
So, Troy Meadow...
It's due east, I believe.
Due east?
It's in the blue.
Yeah, it's in the blue.
It's in the blue.
It's in the blue.
It's in the blue. Yeah, it's...
So, it can't be both?
The trap shoot is in the blue section area now, which cannot be built on.
Right. But, I mean, the black area is what can be built on, right?
Correct.
Okay. Now, does Troy Meadow Road go beyond that black area to the right?
Goes into the blue.
It goes into the wetlands area.
Oh, it does? Okay.
It's all in the blue area, yes.
The blue you can't build on, just the black area.
All right, thank you. One more question. I know this costs money. I mean, the court case, and also the plans that were drawn up proposing building sites. I'm just wondering, who's paying for that? Who's paying for the plans that were drawn up, the engineering plans that I have with me here showing three sites, three buildings being proposed off Brookside Court on the part of the CRW? Someone must be paying for the court case, and someone must be paying for the plans that were drawn up. Can anybody tell me?
Well, the township rezoned this property, RCW, a number of years ago.
Right.
I mean, that's not new. We did, the township did that and paid for it years ago, okay? What this is doing now is just clarifying what is allowed in this RCW zone. That's what's happening now.
Okay.
It's already RCW.
I understand. But the engineering plans that were prepared, the township didn't...
The plans to do what?
To build a building, build buildings.
There are no plans to build a building at this point in time.
I need someone to show me the plans that I have. Who prepared them? They're right across the road from me.
I think you might be referring to the previously approved...
Okay. So, there was a prior application submitted by Wildlife in connection with a residential subdivision that goes back to like 2015.
Yes, that's right.
The planning board took action on that. Those plans were prepared by Wildlife in connection with their site plan application.
All right. So, Wildlife paid for that?
Correct.
Okay. Where did they get the money from?
Oh, I don't know how they derive their income, sir.
Well, I mean, if all they have is Wildlife, how do they produce money from that to pay for these plans? You don't have to ask them that.
You don't have to ask them that. We have representatives of Wildlife here tonight who want to explain what your funding sources are.
Yeah. If you want to speak to them outside, you can find out from them how they raise their money.
I would think that you might have asked them that question. I mean, I think it's relative.
Well, it's a privately-held parcel.
It's a privately-held, not-for-profit organization, so I don't know what fundraising they engage in.
All right. I don't expect to get an answer from them, so... But all right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Prizicki, 273 Marcela Road. I'm a little confused here. When you say 200 acres, what would happen with Jersey City Reservoir? How many acres is that if it becomes open for hiking trails, et cetera, et cetera? Then this zoning ordinance would apply to that too. And you've got residential people. Why not?
I don't know that to be true. I don't think that the reservoir is zoned RCW.
Okay.
I believe it's zoned residential, but we can check the zoning map to make sure. There's a zoning map, Susan, inside the conference.
No, they sued us years ago. There was...
This is not, you're answering my question, so that counts as my time.
This doesn't count on your time, Mary. Just a little history, okay? Initially, it was zoned residential when they built it and it flooded the town that was there underneath.
Right.
It was residential. Some aggressive auditing firm came through and told them, "We can save you a lot of money," and they sued the town to rezon the property, so they were not paying residential rates to the township.
Okay. We can check, right. We can check the zoning map.
Then they could sell it. Yeah.
Sell the reservoir.
Now, it's also devoted to public use, and it's also potentially exempt from zoning without some further analysis. But, so, I think the threshold question is, it's not subject to the zoning ordinance that we're currently discussing.
What about Mount Tabor Country Club?
Let her ask all her questions. We'll answer them at the end.
Okay. The golf course at Mount Tabor, what is that zoned for?
I don't think it meets the threshold 200 acres.
Hold on. Is that your last question?
It's 98, so it's the last one.
Probably. The other thing of, oh, no, it's not my last question. My last question is, is this settlement, that was when they rezoned what they had as residential properties, and I think they had some commercial, and then they put, patched them all together and changed those zonings to RCW. Is that...
That's correct.
That's correct.
Well, actually, there were actually three ordinances, and it happened between 2014 and 2015.
Correct. And then, so, but, when 1950, the way I have found some records, in 1955 on Allen and Marshall Drive, those 13 lots were deeded over by the developer to Wildlife Preserve so they would not be developed on. And if that was part of, in parcel of the lawsuit, and you settled, why did, how did you settle this lawsuit? I don't understand the settlement.
Well, the settlement was what we discussed at the last meeting, as outlined now by the ordinance. I don't know if there are other deed restrictions on the property that preclude development.
That was given to the township. I know it was because I gave it to them. So, that when you settled this out for things like what you're proposing now, I mean, did you have all the facts that might have been there?
We had all the facts. I mean, you know, there was a negotiation between the township and Wildlife to allow them some reasonable use of the property that the zoning ordinance had not heretofore provided for.
So, when you say that that centerpiece of land over there by Troy Meadows Road is the only piece that they could probably put anything in, how are you, if it's an educational center, how are you going to get people down if you don't put a road? And if you're telling me that that's all wetlands, how is that possible? Is it going to get DEP approval?
I mean, that's the subject...
It's impervious service.
It's potentially subject to a lot of DEP permitting requirements, which are not, you know, not part of this zoning ordinance. There are a whole host of other laws that the property owner would need to comply with.
It's just so vague that I think if you had this ordinance and it was more specific, it would have gotten better general public support. But when you're as vague as you are there and you give these people only 150 feet, if I have my really good, my, tell us, binoculars, bird watching, I could watch them to see them what they're doing in their kitchen. I mean, you gave Water View 200 feet buffer zone, and you're only giving these people 150. And if they put observation points there, hey, what if I wanted to, you know...
One minute.
One minute. Just think of what's going to happen to their privacy. The buffer zone should have been bigger for them. It really should have because you have all residents buffering that area now. And then, they're going to have the traffic down Troy Meadow Road. The only other spot you can put a educational center is the Helen Dutton Environmental Center that was there on South Beverick Road...
30 seconds.
...and destroyed by vandals. That was, that's acceptable, but what you're proposing as buffer zone for them, I don't think is.
Mr. Lot, if you could also answer, one of her questions was about the Mount Tabor Golf Course, if that was...
Right. I think we looked at that and determined that that's about 90 acres, and it's less than the threshold amount. So, again, this ordinance would not be applicable there.
Thank you.
Nick Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. Does Wildlife Preserves have like a future plan to attract more people to the preserve so they can make income? Is that the underlying background of these changes? They said agriculture, there was four, but I only recorded three. One was agriculture. So, I'd like to have that further explained. And then, the garage, a garage for what exactly? For the pickup trucks, for the rangers? So, the, some of these things could be consolidated, I would think, all in one block lot, maybe, instead of scattered all over the place. But, and I would think, though, that anything that would improve their experience or make other people go there to increase their income, I would think, though, that the scrutiny would be well taken care of by the DEP, even the Highlands Coalition. And I believe that Wildlife Preserves is a natural, National Natural Resource Landmark. So, I don't know if that would affect it at all, or if that's just a prestigious title. But I would like to know if there's just, you know, more, like Wildlife Preserves is proposing this because it would help them have a better future to preserve and appreciate and have others appreciate this natural resource.
My name is William Kinzer. I live at 32 Parkside Drive. I grew up there, been there 22 years, right by Troy Meadow Road. My question, sorry if this is naive, I just don't understand why we need these accessories, so to speak. I don't, I just don't understand the point in having them. We have the land, the town has the land. If we have to build a road to get to these accessories, I see it as more traffic in our neighborhoods. Yeah, I guess my question, I don't understand why it's needed in the town.
I think my response to that as a lawyer would be that the enactment of standards actually gives the township more control as to where any potential development would take place on the property. The accessory standards that are provided for or proposed in the ordinance are consistent with the preservation mission of Wildlife and its mission to preserve the land.
And also, you said, "We have the land." The land is privately owned, not town land.
That's correct.
So, we don't have it. They have it, and we're putting boundaries on what they can do with it.
I'll just ask my questions first. I want to know where is the Smith Road on this map? Also want to know, is there any parking lot going to be associated with this? How big of a parking lot that will be? What kind of vehicles we are expecting that may come? Because that affects the neighborhood. Another thing that will affect the neighborhood is there will be probably lights. And remember, all these are wetlands. You are going to have electric poles somewhere. So maybe these structures will come close to the road, Beverick Road or Troy Meadow Road. Because you need to bring water, you need to bring the lights. So I'm just thinking that a lot of the black spaces you are showing between the wetlands, but in reality, the lights and sewer and parking lots and other things, that will narrow it down to probably one or two pieces of properties over there. And you can help us, you can show us where that can be, instead of just saying that it can be anywhere in the black areas. It does limit it. And, you know, I would like to see what you think those areas will be. Because there will be some roads that needs to access those area. Okay? And buffer, I agree with Mary that 150 feet is not enough buffer. It's too close. I mean, I used to have a backyard that was 150 feet, and I know how close that is. So you need to rethink about the buffer area, too. Okay? That's all I have. If I can get some of the questions answered. Thank you.
If you could, I think his first question was, where is Smith Road on there?
Smith Road or a special track? I'll walk the map, I would say.
It's some distance west of this.
Okay. The second question was, would there be a parking lot?
Can I just say something? The reason I ask is because I received two certified mails and another mail.
Right.
Total cost of about $15 for that. I received three notices within two days. So I thought it must be very important for me.
Right. I think that you received the notices because of your proximity to Smith Field, which I believe is also zoned RCW. As we explained...
His proximity is Forge Pond.
Forge Pond, right, which is also, also I believe zoned as RCW.
That's why you received the notice, because of Forge Pond.
Yeah. It's not because of what you're going to be close to.
His second question was, would there be any parking, you know, is there any plans or anything for parking lot or provisions for parking lot?
Well, I just want to say that there's no plans for anything. I just want to reiterate that. There's no proposed developments in sites, no proposed development, period.
Right, I'm just repeating his question.
And I think in terms of a parking lot, that would fall under the existing accessory definition that you have now, which is anything incidental to the principal permitted use. So a parking lot is not really, you know, it's not contemplated in the zoning change that you have before you. It exists now. They could put in a parking area to whatever they're doing on their property. Obviously, they'll have, they'd have to meet zoning requirements, setback, DEP. It would be subject to whatever regulations are in place now, and that's not proposed to change.
Correct.
Thank you. No, sorry, you were already, you guys, you were already up here before.
I know, but you know what? We were promised a map with the proposed zone changes on it, and we didn't get it.
So I want to be clear, all right? There's no zone change here. The zone change occurred years ago, all right? This is an amendment, this is an amendment to the RCW Zone District Standards.
Okay.
All right, so there's a distinction. There's no rezoning of any property.
It doesn't matter. We don't know what zones any of this is.
We just heard an explanation about the limits of the RCW Zone District.
It doesn't make any sense to me. Our concerns are, let's face it, our concerns are the track of land between Parkside Drive, going up Troy Meadow Roads to Beverick. That's the main concern, because if that is developed, we're in trouble.
Ms. Favadi, just so we're clear on this, why don't you go back to the, to the map that shows the outline of the...
Sir.
...zone district boundary as it relates to Troy Meadow?
Because you can speak to her.
One of my questions wasn't answered before, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, which one was that?
That was the one about the, whether the settlement was concluded. Is this a wrong-on conclusion?
No.
It's not.
No.
So it's still a subject to being changed.
There you go.
Is the settlement subject to change?
The settlement is not subject to change unless counsel directs me to go back to wildlife and have the discussion of whether or not the settlement should be changed. But as of right now, the settlement is final, and it's also been, it's also been entered into court.
Well, then why are we here? See, that's part of my question.
We're here, sir, because this, one of the provisions of the settlement agreement was that the township acts to rezone, to change the zone district standards in the RCW Zone District. That was part of our settlement agreement.
And we were also advised that we could indicate our objection or...
Absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely. That's why we're having the hearing tonight, and that was the purpose of the notice as well.
So, but does it do any good?
Yeah, there's action pending before the council. Council needs to take action on the zone amendment.
But you said it was finalized.
No, I said the settlement agreement was finalized.
Right.
With, with the settlement agreement is settled, the town and RCW in court. But, so it was approved by the planning board.
Yes.
And now the council.
All right, so there's nothing subject to change, then?
Only if the council...
I see this as we are proactively defining what can be built on private land that the town does not own. So it would be as though we were going to dictate what you could build on your land.
Sure.
Could you put up a 15-story high-rise? No, we would have to come and do something like this. So we are saying it has to be accessible by an existing road that's not, they're not building residential, they're not, it's a very specific use that has to be accessible from an existing road. So the 150-foot buffer that's in question, a lot of that isn't even on the table for development because it's not accessible. Now, a bird watching station, that may be the case, but they could be building that anyway, first of all. And second of all, we're telling them it has to be within this 150-foot zone. And I tend to believe in people's better nature, that someone going up there with a pair of binoculars is there to look at birds.
Right. And it would have to be at least 150 feet away from any adjacent residential structure. That's the minimum setback distance. I'm sorry, it's adjacent residential lot line, that's correct. That's right. That's the minimum setback distance.
I have a question. Sir, you got up and spoke at our last meeting, correct?
We did.
What is your address again?
1050 South Beverick Road.
1050 South Beverick Road. So can you just point out that address for me up there?
That's your checkered address.
By the curve.
What is that?
So there's a blue...
So there is a potential dark spot there.
Yeah.
Right there.
But it's not next to any kind of road.
Yes.
It's a little triangle. I don't know how big that area is.
So they could build something there.
But they can do that today?
Right, they can do, they can do that already without us doing anything.
But the 150 feet...
But if you're further, if you're further down this way, it's all blue. So they can't do anything there, depending on where you are.
It's all blue.
Anything that's in blue, it's swamp. They can't do anything on it.
That's swamp back there.
Then they can't do anything on it near your property. I just wanted to, I know you had some questions and you brought up some points last meeting, so I wanted to get those answered for you.
And as I understand it, doesn't this go back, revert back to that being open, then, right, to, it's not the accessory zoning or restricting what they can do or limiting?
Well, I mean, you know, in a hypothetical sense, right, right now, without any zone district controls, all right, and they would be able to, the property owner would be able to locate any accessory structure...
That's what I'm saying.
...without any setback distance at all. So conceivably, they could, right, or without any size control, all right? They could, they could put it right on someone's property line. Would the planning board allow that? I don't know. You know, that would be the subject of a development application.
Or would they allow anything here as well?
Exactly.
So that's the same, the same issue.
So anything that wildlife wants to propose on these areas that are beyond the 150-foot setback, they have, they have to go to the planning board to have the planning board approve any of these structures. Even though we may have it listed in our ordinance, they still have to go before the planning board and everything, it would have to be approved by the planning board members.
Correct. It would be subject of a site plan application and all the other required approvals, county soil conservation district approval, DEP approval.
Well, I just, I'm hearing...
County planning board approval.
I'm hearing the resident talk about lighting. We've got wildlife, I mean wildlife, excuse me, we have, we have swamp here. Where are we going to put, or where are they, we don't know where they're proposing it. But these are questions I think that some of the residents are thinking about.
And I could tell you there are questions that the planning board has already started thinking about, because when we discussed this in terms of master plan consistency, the planning board raised questions about parking lots and lighting and those types of impacts. And they're valid questions, and they're questions that would certainly be an important part of a development application, that they would have to submit to the planning board, and then they'd have to answer those questions.
And I think it's also, again, it bears repeating, that all of the other township development controls would apply. Lighting, stormwater, soil movement...
Signage.
Signage, location of utilities.
So we are adding restrictions, not relieving them.
That is correct.
So that gentleman's questions about flooding and stuff like that, that's, that's something that the planning board, you know, those issues are going to have to be addressed if they are in the future.
Correct.
Going to look.
I want officially on the record that this, that I mentioned this because this is, the situation is getting worse.
Has, has anything come before the, you've just mentioned that questions have been raised as far as parking and lighting. Has these issues been raised presently, or are these the past issues?
These issues were raised a month or so ago in a planning board meeting where after your, I think it was right after your first reading, or actually the night before your first reading, the planning board had to consider this particular zone change in terms of master plan consistency. They had to make a determination of whether this proposed change is consistent with the master plan. So it was in the context of that meeting, within the last month or so, that the planning board started asking, well, what does this mean and what kind of development could we see here? And again, those are all great questions, but there is no actual development proposed here. And at the point when there is, or if there is, those would be questions that the planning board would ask and would have to be answered. And I would also note that other township department heads would probably be opining on this as well. I mean, I'm sure engineering would probably have something to say, particularly with regards to flooding. So there would be a full, you know, reckoning, a full review of this, whatever development proposal there is.
Thank you.
But again, only for the structures we talked about, not for an apartment complex or buildings or housing. So again, it needs to, I'm sorry, it just needs to be said again.
We have someone here from the Wildlife Preserve. I know the young lady spoke the last time. Is it possible for you to come up? And I know you've been making notes. Possibly you can come up again and just alleviate some of the concerns. Come up.
Sure.
Wait a minute, we have another resident that may want to come up. Come up.
My name is Bill Hozley. I'm at 1128 South Beverick Road. The parcel she was just looking at, the bend on South Beverick Road where it is highlighted, the dark area, we've noticed a lot of the park rangers there recently. That piece of property would be big enough for what they're talking about for their building, so we're curious on if they have plans on going that route with the building on that parcel. That's my only question.
Okay.
All right.
Well, the representative from Wildlife Preserve is here. I think if she comes up and, you know, maybe she has some answers to your concerns as she did the last time.
You should sign in and identify yourself for the record.
Into the mic. Yeah, to us.
To you, yes.
Hi, I'm Anita Shotwell, and I'm the managing trustee for Wildlife Preserves. As some but not all of you know, Wildlife Preserves Incorporated, or Wildlife for short, is a 501(c)(3) charitable land preservation organization that owns or manages roughly 2,000 acres of land in Troy Meadows, with other open space holdings in New Jersey and New York State. Whether you've heard of us or not, Wildlife Preserves has actually served the public of precipice Troy Hills through the preservation of Troy Meadows for more than 60 years. If there is a lack of information about Wildlife Preserve's purpose or mission, it is largely because Wildlife's founder, the late Robert Perkins, was so humble about his accomplishments. Starting in the 1950s, Mr. Perkins spearheaded the protection of this national natural landmark by cobbling together parcels of what was considered at the time, prime building land, to create a wildlife sanctuary in Par Troy and neighboring East Hanover. This was all done through private philanthropy and at no cost to taxpayers and without government funding. And it took place years before most people recognized the value of open space, in fact, decades before the New Jersey Freshwater Wetlands Protection Act or the Highland Act. Wildlife Preserve's first priority is the preservation of habitat for the plant and animal residents of Troy Meadows and our other wildlife sanctuary areas, which over the last 60 years has meant the perpetual threat of encroachment and trespass by state DOT, utility companies, and even private for-profit enterprises like the Pilgrim Oil Pipeline. Many of these groups view open space as a simple and inexpensive place to expand their rights of way and blaze new trails miles long through privately owned and protected wetland and upland habitat. As I mentioned at part one of this hearing, I came over to Wildlife after 30 years in animal welfare, and I took on the duty of managing trustee in the beginning of 2014. We have been embroiled in litigation with the township on the issue of zoning since that time, but we are looking forward to putting this dispute behind us and to working with the local government and residents toward our many common goals, including preservation of Troy Meadows. I absolutely understand and appreciate the confusion surrounding this ordinance, and from my own background, I view that as a positive sign that residents care about their neighborhoods and the environment. I recognize that we will have to earn your trust in the coming years and hope that we'll be able to do that. With regard to the expanded use in the RCW ordinance, as was previously noted, this is part of a compromise with the township that actually removes significant residential and industrial zoning in Troy Meadows that prevents these developments and puts in place the type of zoning that is comparable with what the Morris County Parks and the Great Swamp National Wildlife Refuge have. That is not to say that all or any of these structures in the ordinance will ever be realized, but if something is ever built, the maximum use is limited to something that is appropriate for the area as opposed to a warehouse or an assembly plant. Wildlife would someday like to have a nature center in Troy Meadows for educational purposes and to support the preservation of Troy Meadows. Using Craftman's Farms that spoke two weeks ago as one example, an education center can take years to fund and several more years to conceive and plan. This is not something around the corner, any more than it was the day before residents received these ordinance notices in the mail. As someone who spends time on site at Troy Meadows, I personally would like to see a staff area or ranger station where we can use a restroom, warm our feet in the winter, and recharge our cameras. As a nonprofit organization based in this community, it is in... As a nonprofit organization based in this community, it is in our best interest to be as transparent as possible with regard to any proposed action, and to make sure everything we do is of minimal impact to the environment and the community. To that end, I want to just quickly clarify what seems to be a major cause of distress for many residents, and that is the issue of value and land when it comes to open space. In the state of New Jersey, a property is appraised at its highest and best use, which is invariably the potential for development. In fact, as I mentioned before, dozens of these Troy Meadows land parcels were rescued from residential development at full market price to be added to the Troy Meadows land inventory. Other parcels were once slated for industrial and office use. It is unfortunate that for-profit businesses, public utilities or otherwise, do not equally value the ecological or community potential of property. Maintaining the highest market value is one major deterrent against encroachment, seizure, or forcible sale of our private sanctuary land for public purposes by making it more expensive for others to do so. If you look at the number of times this has been done to Wildlife Preserves in our 60-year history, including the construction of Roots 80 and 280, Algonquin Pipeline, Eastern Texas Pipeline, Precipiny Troy Hills Sewer Lines and Pump Station, PSENG and JCPL Power Lines, it may help residents to understand why we resort to litigation to maintain highest and best use, including development rights for sanctuary property. The township settlement with RCW zoning to apply to Wildlife is a win-win for the residents and Wildlife's purpose of preservation. In the case of Precipiny Troy Hills, which is Wildlife Preserve's home base, the highest and best use strategy we have clung to in recent years has been at the cost of our relationship with the public. And so with this settlement, we are sacrificing our overall property value with the hope of building our support in the community as we count on residents and neighbors to be another line of defense against encroachment and unauthorized use of Troy Meadows. And people can take the time to look at our history on our website at wildlifepreserves.org or contact us. There's a contact form with email for anyone who wants to reach us directly with questions that they have or concerns that they have, and that's important to us as another member of the community. And we look forward to hearing from residents and working with them and with the township for the benefit of our shared community, which includes Troy Meadows. So I'm not sure what else it was that you wanted.
Well, I thought possibly you would be addressing some of the concerns that these residents have had this evening. I appreciate you coming here. I appreciate your statements that you've made, but I don't think you've answered any of these questions.
What, what are the questions? I thought most of these questions have been answered by-
Well, evidently, the, the questions of the, whether it be Mary or the other gentleman that lives on Troy Road, or the people that live on Brookside, these are still some, I believe, some important questions that they have.
I would agree. Anything that, that residents have that is questions, it affects us.
Yes.
But most of these are questions that can't be answered. Contrary to popular belief, we do not have plans. I know people have, have indicated that they're, this is where it's going to be, or that's where it's going to be, or that they've seen some sort of activity, and there is nothing, it's not to say that we would not like to have something, or that we, it would not be something that we deserve to have, or be useful and fully in compliance with that, the use of the property. But we do not have plans, and they're not answers that we can provide, but we would be happy to, to take, you know, a list of people who want to be advisory or some capacity as we move forward. But I'm not sure what other questions have not been answered by Mr. Lot and by the planner, I'm sorry, I forget your name.
You just, you just said something that I think some of these people may be interested in. You said an advisory board, if, if any of these-
Right, right now-
...residents would like to be part of, maybe, you know, in the decision-making process, that something that you may look to do in the future?
Right.
If that's possible, that some of these people could be involved in that, that would be great.
Right. We have, I think, right now, on our website, there is a, a sign up for Friends of Troy Meadows, where people can contact me via email. There's a form on there for Anita Shotwell under contacts. That would be something, you know, we would like to work with the community on anything, including everyday concerns that we've not, I heard a lot of people speak two weeks ago about the ATV traffic and four-wheel-drive traffic and things of that nature that clearly need to be reported more and documented and addressed. So it doesn't have to just be about building, but anything that involves working with the community.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a form on the website at wildlifepreserves.org, and it's for Anita Shotwell, and, you know, any of those concerns, because we heard a lot last week, you might want to just open a dialogue.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, see no one else come forward to entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Hi, my name's Isabel Alfano. I live in 8 New England Drive. I appreciate the understanding that now there's going to be transparency, but the reason why people and the residents are so confused is because they receive these notices without any advance notice, and quite frankly, I love the colors of the map, but I still don't know. 200 acres is a lot of land, and as you mentioned, this is where they're looking at now, but potentially, once this is settled, I started to look around my neighborhood. I don't know what's clearly defined now as now what belongs to RWC, I mean RCW. So behind my house, I have this large area called Fairfield, Field Fair Property. Do we know, can we know now what is now rezoned, what's renamed, what's reowned, what they can potentially build on? Because my understanding is that, okay, this gets passed, we're talking about this area right now, but down the road, they can potentially do whatever they want now. No? Because the last gentleman was talking about, oh, well, property doesn't mean anything unless we can monetize on it, and that's what he kept saying. So if we're talking about monetizing area, then I just want to have a clear understanding, what areas are we talking about? I mean, that was a lot of light green.
So, so again, this map shows where the locations are throughout Precipiny Troy Hills that are currently zoned RCW. So this potential zoning change only affects the existing RCW zone. There are no boundary changes proposed to the RCW zone. But further, most of these, all of these green areas, except for the Troy Meadows area that's owned by Wildlife Preserves, are not subject to this proposed zoning change because they don't meet that threshold of both 200 acres, contiguous acres, and those acres being owned by one entity. So none of these other areas would be subject to future development under this ordinance. And then further, what I perhaps should have made clear at the outset, everything that's colored on this map is currently zoned RCW and will remain zoned RCW. But within this colored area, all of the light green is owned by Wildlife Preserve. So it's only that area within this larger sort of site that is, that meets that threshold, and that's subject to the, the ability to have these, these different types of accessory uses, subject to being 150 feet away from a residential zone, having access off of either Bever, South Beverick or Troy Meadow, and those building coverage limitations. So we're talking about the light green area, but within that light green area, there are those limitations which I just spoke about.
Thank you. Okay, this time on entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, or motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call. Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Floor is closed. Whereas?
Okay. Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on the second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore few resolved and said ordinance be passed on final reading and that the notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call. Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance, ordinance 2018:13. An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, granting a utility easement to Morris Corporate Center 6 LLC over a portion of Block 136, Lot 44 on the tax map of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills. The notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, on July 31, 2018. The ordinance was introduced at the July 24, 2018 Agenda Meeting. Motion to accept that the ordinance 2018:13 be heard in its second and final reading by title only. Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call. Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?